Start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda. However, we are planning to move number 16, the proclamation regarding Mental Health Month, between number seven and number eight on the agenda.
I will second that motion with the addendum.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of last week's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last week.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve this week's claims for payment.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm past the 10:02 timeframe, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit, Gary Hansen Site, Section 28 of Aetna Township. Is there any public comments? This is the time that the public speaks. Hearing no public comments. Are there any written comments? Hearing done. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And now go to the recommendation to the DNR on the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit Site, Gary Hansen Site, Section 28 of Aetna Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to the DNR on the Animal Feeding Site, Operation Gary Hansen Site, Section 28 of Aetna Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is for two buildings site. Each building will contain roughly 4,992 animals.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. From there, I will go to item 16, which is a proclamation of mental health.
Morning, Tim.
Morning, VJ.
How are you?
I'm good, VJ.
Glad you're here.
Hi, Lance.
How are you?
Thanks for having me at your board meeting this morning. You're the only two that I know here, so I don't know everybody else.
I'm Renee McClellan.
Oh, Renee, yes. Yes, I now I put a face to the name now. I'm Tim Rogers. I'm a mental health consumer in Hardin County. I'd like to introduce some fellow mental health consumers. My good friend Pete. We've been friends since 1994. Tim and Barbara Bittner. They are here to also represent mental health. Okay. Now, I'm going to read this to you. Is this what?
Yep, you're good.
Mental Health Month 2017 proclamation. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation. And half of us will have a mental health diagnosis at some point in our lives. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times. And whereas, engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health, of mental illnesses as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral health risks and supports specific tools that all Americans can use to prevent their health and well-being. And whereas, with effective treatment before stage four, all individuals with mental illnesses, even serious mental illnesses, can make progress toward recovery and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all. Whereas, or what, uh, sorry. Therefore, therefore, we, the Hardin County Board of Supervisors... Oh, this is important. Okay, therefore... We, we, the Hardin County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May, uh, 2017 as Mental Health Month. We call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to predict, to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses at all stages. And then, um, turning a, turning a corner here. I would like to invite all of you to the 18th Annual Mental Health Awareness Seminar and Luncheon in recognition, in recognition of May as National Mental Health Awareness Month. And sponsored by Hardin County Faith in Action. That's the Friendship Club that we go to where we meet. It's Wednesday, May 24th, at, from 11:30 to 1 o'clock at the First United Methodist Church in Iowa Falls. And the speaker will be Patty Trebo Lees. She's going to speak about recovery, healing happens. She says that many mental health issues are related to trauma. Patty will discuss the close connection of traumatic events to mental illnesses, discuss the principles of the trauma-informed approach, and share the stages of recovery toward resiliency. And then, whoever, I can, I've got several, uh, uh, things, applications here. And then, if you just want to, uh, return this, uh, application, needs to be in by May 17th. So, yeah, mark it on your calendar, Wednesday, May 24th, Methodist Church, Iowa Falls. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks for...
Oh.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike, is that something that can be put on the website so people can apply there as well?
Yep, Mike. I went ahead and already talked to Lynn about it.
Okay.
She's going to send me a press release.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to proclaim May as the Mental Health Month and to sign the proclamation.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Can we stay for this?
Next. Next, I'm going to move to item eight, which is the confirmation of timely service on Dennis Prohaska. Do you want to lead me into that, or?
This is on the application to install drainage tile. Thank you.
Thank you.
By George Yager. If I pronounced right. And Jolene, M. Jolene Wilson Yager. And it says versus Dennis Prohaska. Nancy, was the notice served on Mr. Prohaska?
Yes, it was mailed and he signed for it on April 4th.
And the code, Section 468.601, requires that we serve that notice not less than 10 days before the time set for hearing, so April 4th and the 3rd are more than 10 days. Mr. Prohaska, do you have any contention with me and serving it before? Okay, so it appears that that notice was timely, certainly, to Mr. Prohaska.
Okay. Next, I can go to the presentation of Yager application. We have Attorney Art Caddy.
Thank you. I'm with me today is my client, George Yager, and Matt Garber, the engineer. I know the board has reviewed the application. I'm not going to go through it and just restate it. I have asked Mr. Garber to prepare a brief presentation to the board this morning, just outlining a bit about the history of what has gone on with these two properties and why we are feeling necessary that this application needed to be made in accordance with what is permitted under the Iowa Drainage Law. So at this time, I would like to turn the program over to Matt Garber to outline what we're here before the board this morning. Thank you.
Matt Garber, Clotsettle Garber Associates, civil engineering, landscaping firm. Mr. Yager contacted me probably about September 2015 and asked me to take a look at this area.
There we go. Sorry, I dropped the report.
So I've put together this report, I believe that once submitted, I have a few additional copies if it's, if it's needed. But it's kind of a, uh... We'll read through it word for word, but try to find some of these areas here. Basically, this area is in Section 30, Township 89, Range 20, just south of Iowa Falls. So the Highway 65 is there. Elsworth, the west green area. And, uh... Okay, from there to there is Mr. Prohaska's property. Mr. Yager's property is to the, to the south. And essentially, there, there's a low point here in the middle that Mr. Yager's property drains through. And there, there's a tile that goes through there that drains the low point, drains Mr. Yager's property. There, the evident, you know, the exact route is not known without digging it up, but there is a, an area of intake drain, one of those orange stand pipes right here at the fence line. And then generally, right in this area, there's a tile, tile outlet structure, or tile flow control structure that had been installed. So, you know, those are the two endpoints. And then it, the tile continues to drain off across this property and then goes... Again, this is Mr. Yager's property up here. And the tile continues draining off to the north. It kind of, you know, wrapped, eventually ends up wrapping around.
Where does that water drain to after that?
It, uh... Eventually, I don't know. I don't think this photo goes... Well, there it is. So eventually, the water ends up coming all the way around. Essentially, up by the hospital, there's another drain tile it connects to, comes around, and then it actually discharges into this drainage way here and then wraps around, backs out. And there's, there's a high point in here where you really can't physically cross to get another tile in through there. So I've got several other exhibits. These are just soil maps.
You do know?
Yeah.
Go ahead and exit. Just get key on the keyboard. Yeah, that'll get you to more of a... Should, yeah. The other way, the plus. Yeah, this one will take you to the full page.
Okay. So, uh, this is a little bit... This is from an air, a 2016 aerial photo of the site. Again, showing kind of a... I'm touching that.
Touchy little thing and then...
The existing tile line through there. And approximate areas of the, of the water in 2016.
Here you go. The top one, to give a nice little point.
Ah, there you go. Keep scrolling back. So 2009, I was able to kind of go back through and research old aerial photos. So 2009, you can see the area in question doesn't, uh... It looks like it's a wet area, but it, there's no standing water through there. Mr. Yager's property was dry and he could continue to farm through there. Again, there's 2009. 2011, must have been a wet year, a little bit darker there in the middle. 2013, almost looks like it was farmed clean through. There's no impacts to Mr. Yager's property. Then 2014, I believe that is the, just before then, maybe the last part of 2013, early 2014, a tile control structure was installed right, right there. And that's where there's a box put on the, on the tile. And you have the tile coming in on, on one end, going out on the other, but there's a movable baffle in the middle to be able to control the groundwater to artificially raise it up or lower it. And I, I, we believe that that was installed with all, all the plates in there. And that pond was basically treated. And you could see how the water impacted Mr. Yager's property. It bonded, bonded his, his property there. And then, you know, 2015, I believe that's when we started. Mr. Yager was starting to talk to Mr. Prohaska. We believe the plates were removed. And I did do a site visit with the two of them one, one, one day. And I confirmed that the plates were, had been removed and the water did, had been drained down considerably. But it hadn't totally receded to where it was before. It was still impacting Mr. Yager's property here. And even if the water went down, there's still, it's super saturated. He couldn't, couldn't plant through it. And this, this was a 2016 flight that we were able to find. So that was last year. And you can see, it's, it's still a wet area along his property line. Kind of two, two loaves here, the, the main, main pond, and then a, then a loave here. Since the aerial photo was done, at some point last year, Mr. Prohaska brought in some field dirt in here. And so I, I don't know exactly the extent of this loave up, up here, but some dirt had been brought in. And so I think the characteristics have changed a little bit. I don't know exactly where it is without updating aerial photo or doing some survey work. So there's a little, there's a little bit of history there from aerial photos we were able to find. And then, you know, I guess the solution that we are proposing in, in the, in the drum, in the packet would be to connect, connect to this tile line downstream of Mr. Prohaska's and then run a new, non-perforated section of pipe up to Mr. Yager's property. And then run, in this red line here on the drawing, and then run a perforated section of pipe along his, along the property line, roughly 20 feet south of the property line in the fence, probably reconnecting that, that riser intake in this location and be able to drain Mr. Yager's property. And then this would be a solid wall pipe with no perforations to be able to convey it through Mr. Prohaska's property and connect on the other side of the property line. And whether it's just north of the tile outlet or the tile flow structure or even going up into this property, Mr. Yager's talk, he has, is in conversations with this property owner to possibly even take it further up, up in this area and tap into it. This is an eight-inch tile going north. And we're proposing to, just to continue that on, connect on to that with an eight-inch, you know, to put a, put a Y in it in connection so that, you know, this line here would still be functional for Mr. Prohaska. But then, you know, this, this would be a new line. I, you know, I, we don't know exactly where that new line needs to go until we can either survey where the edge of the water is now or, you know, the tile contractor can verify. I mean, it'll need to be, if, if, if this is the existing water now, it won't be able to go right through the middle of the pond. It, it'll need to be skirted around further. But if the water level has receded and the dirt has been moved such that, you know, this is a, could be a dry route. This is a representation of approximately where we, we feel it needs to go. And we just feel that even after the, those tile baffle plates were removed, this, there'd been such a long time where there'd been standing water, there'd no flow through that tile. Don't feel like, you know, we feel like that tile's already been silted full and not, not functional through that stretch. That's, that's, that's the reason why we'd like to run a new tile around instead of trying to repair this or flush it or get it to work again. Got a lot of information there, some brief background and then what we're proposing for a solution. Is there questions or I can move on to the...
I do have a couple of questions. So why would a control box have been installed there? Initially?
That I don't know. That would need to be...
Okay. I didn't know from an engineering standpoint if that was a standard practice or not.
Well, I mean, those are becoming more common in certain circumstances because of, you know, they're, you know, you, you slow the, the flow in, in areas provides opportunities for dematrification of the runoff and that sort of stuff to kind of create a, a wetland. That's, that is becoming more prevalent on, in certain, certain act practices. So I, I guess I'm assuming that's what Mr. Prohaska's intent was.
Okay.
It's just that it, you know, it backed it up to a level where it was impacting a neighbor's property.
Okay. And then, uh, the new tile, no control box, would be installed with that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so your belief in your professional expertise is the current tile is backed up because the control box allowed for it to be silted in and become blocked?
That's, without being able to televise it or get into it any further, that's what our...
Why wasn't it televised or?
I believe, this stretch had been televised north of there. And actually, there was an area that was repaired last year, two years ago. Just we, you know, we really, we weren't allowed to...
Okay.
To investigate that.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have for questions for him.
With, with wetland determinations, obviously, this probably falls in within the wetland area. Is he, would he, would George be entitled to run a tile there without it affecting the wetland determinations, being in fact it had a tile through the center of that? Or is that an NRCS question?
I mean, it's probably technically an NRCS question, but just the fact that it is aground right now.
I, I know he's entitled to what he has, but I don't know if we're entitled to more.
As far as draining?
To wetland.
And I, I think if, if this is allowed to turn into a wetland down in here, I mean, right now, I don't believe it meets all the categories for that. So, but if it is, then that does negatively.
I, I'm talking about the NRCS calls a wetland. It can be farmable wetland, it can be non-farmable wetland. It's their determination as to what it is. I, I don't want anybody in violation of NRCS, which puts...
We aren't, we aren't providing additional drainage to Mr. Prohaska's land though. There's no, he's not going to...
No improvement.
No improvement, no change of his land. We don't, he can do with what he wants to with his land.
It's a non-perforated tile.
It was a non-perforated tile and it should not... Whether he's got a wetlands or not should not have anything to do with it because we're not draining it or making it better. We're, we're, we're making Mr. Yager's land better, but there should be zero effect on Mr. Prohaska's land.
I'm just asking the question as far as the NRCS.
I appreciate the question. I just, I just wanted to clear that.
And I don't want George or Denny in trouble with the NRCS.
Oh, I don't either.
Can, Mr. Katie, will you explain in our pre-hearing conference, you explained a 10-year rule or law. Can you explain that so it's public record, so people understand the, the, what you had explained previously?
Sure. If, if there is a continuous use of the, the tile that Mr. Prohaska had or for a period of 10 years, where both property owners or their predecessors, there's tacking on that's allowed. If there's been a continuous use of that for 10 years, Mr. Yager could claim and would claim that there, he has an easement to, to use the existing tile.
Right.
And that's, that's where I think your question goes.
Right.
The reason we're not doing that is that we know what reasonably it will cost to, to put in a non-perforated tile. We don't have any kind of a written drainage agreement with Mr. Prohaska. There, there's not been good exchanges between the parties in the past. And we just, like the saying, the saying goes, good fences make good neighbors. We think that, um, to, to have this allowed, it just keeps the parties apart. They don't have to deal with each other. And it should be minimal impact, if any. I, I can't think of any on Mr. Prohaska's.
But there is a legal entitlement there that the...
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Yes, but I'd like to add that the drainage code doesn't require that person have established that prescribed easement through 10 years.
Okay.
If there hadn't been any drainage in this area in the past, an applicant can still proceed under 468.600 to do what Mr. Yager is proposing to do.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that easement on existing tile that is in Mr. Yager's property? Or is it he's on the tile?
It's on your, it's on your ground.
But it doesn't drain yet. It's outside of surface drain.
It sure does.
There's no tile that goes across the tile?
Well, it drains into that tile.
But it's surface drain.
Well, you've got an intake up there that goes in.
Uh, I don't believe that intake is on his property.
It's on, it's on your property.
I, I'd say it's on my side of the net.
Yeah, I agree.
It's not in Mr. Yager's property.
I know.
So with surface drains, so what you have, that it's not controlling anything but the surface drain, does that mean that he has an easement over, even though the tile is not in his property, that it's on the other side, he has easement on that tile?
I believe that he does.
I'm not sure.
No, I, I want to interrupt for a minute. I would, I would submit that that's irrelevant to what the application is asking for. I understand there's been some litigation between the parties about this very area of property. And I haven't been advised that anything having to do with that litigation has any effect on what we're talking about today. I'm not aware of any injunctions, any orders that have any effect on this. If there are some, we need to be notified of that. I'm assuming if there were...
There is an injunction. There's an injunction prohibiting Mr. Prohaska from using that control box.
Okay, is that the extent of the injunction?
Yes.
Nothing on Mr. Yager?
Correct.
Okay. So as far as I'm concerned, the disagreement that you're having right now about whether or not there's an easement for that tile, that's not relevant to our discussion today.
I agree.
Because they're not applying for an injunction or, or an easement across it.
Correct. There, he is applying for a completely different tile to go through the property to satisfy a drainage issue. So unless you two disagree with me on that, I would say that what you're arguing about right now is irrelevant to the application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
While we're on the subject and you're addressing it, one of my questions is, since, if this tile was installed, and like you said, it does not impact my, my tile drainage at all. If it was... If it was installed, would you lift the injunction? Because me using the box has no effect because you have your own tile.
You'll have to talk to your lawyer about that. I'd have to do that consideration.
Well, I think that-
I don't know. I don't think that's, I think that's a separate question that we're-
Well, but it does apply to this because now, if you have your own separate tile, it drains Mr. Yorga's property. And as you said, it does not impact my property at all. I believe using a control box would not impact his drainage.
Well, it may increase the water coming across his property line, and I, 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 that's why I'm not agreeing to it at this point. I don't know. But if it, if it had the result of increasing the flow of water, backing up the water further onto Mr. Jaeger's property, you're darn right, you would not be willing to withdraw the injunction.
So, I'm going to interrupt again, uh, because I think that the issues you're talking about right now are not relevant to the application today. I don't mean to be rude. We could, we could go on this, you know, we could go all day if we start talking about tangential issues. So, I will just state that the, the, the fact that there is some kind of an injunction in place does not affect the board's decision today. If the parties want to discuss how that might affect the injunction, I would say that you have to take that up at a later time, separate from this hearing today. We don't have any control over the judge or the judge's orders or the judge's injunction, so I would ask that the board let Mr. Garber finish his presentation, and then we can turn the floor over to the public hearing, and we can talk about the objections, so we stay orderly on it.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, you know, I guess my presentation, I kind of went through the, the history and then what we're proposing to do, and I, really, that's, that's my intent on going through, unless there were any specific questions that they would like to look at for exhibits, but.
I have a question for you. Would you say that, what is it going to take for you to find out exactly where the most beneficial location would be to enter the property and go through the property and exit the property? Will that require a further inspection of the property? Will that require some conversation with Mr. Prohaska about what he has done elevation-wise by, by putting dirt on the, on the property? Because at some point in time, this board, if it approves the application, is going to need to know with specificity the exit point, the course and the exit point, so that we can file that with the recorder so that everybody will know from this day forward exactly where it should be. So, that's my question to you.
So, I would need permission to have my survey crews, you know, basically do a little topographic survey along the edge of the water, so that we can, you know, get elevations and then know exactly, um, where the appropriate route is. And then we would, we would be able to identify the flow line of the tile or our connection point, and then, you know, basically prepare a little plan and profile sheet of that with an exact route, and then that would also generate a kind of a meets and bounds easement description that would, would lock it in.
And when you make those, those decisions, can you, how specifically can you give us the coordinates of the entrance, the course and the exit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, it would be, you know, I envision it would be a document very similar to a typical property survey, where we'll have section, you know, it'll tie, be tied to a section corner. It can be reproduced in two years or fifty years.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Any more on your presentations? Okay. From there, I will go to review all written objections and claims for damages.
Nancy, the only thing that I've been provided with is the handwritten objection from Mr. Prohaska. It's filed May first, two thousand seventeen. To the Hardin County Board of Supervisors, I would like to file an objection to Mr. Yorga's plan to install drainage tile through my property and other plans he has proposed. Also, if the board sees fit to approve such tile, I would like compensation and the right to hook on to tile that is in my property, signed to Dennis Prohaska. And I would suggest that you turn the floor over to Mr. Prohaska and the public in general for a public hearing on this application.
Denny, you want the public hearing, or turn it over to Denny first?
The same thing. One and the same.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the application to install drainage tile. It's pass to ten-ten. Public hearing's open. Denny, would you like to talk? There's a pointer there if you'd pass it down.
Uh, no, I pretty well agree with everything there, um, you know, how it's planned or whatever. Uh, there was never any compensation or damages discussed or offered here. And also, the question I have is if I have the right to hook on to the proposal that Mr. Yorga had made before in writing specifically, said that I would not have the right to hook on to it if he, if he put the tile through, which is why it was rejected.
Which is why what was rejected?
They had made an offer through my lawyer before about doing this, but when they, when they proposed this, and it wasn't quite as extensive, the proposal said if they went through, I would not have the right to hook on to it.
I understand.
And that's why we rejected that. If I had the right to hook on, if they're willing to offer that, it would change my opinion about I would deal with this or my approval or acceptance of it. That's, that would be something, because, you know, this would be for quite a while. You know, that would, if that was part of the proposal, I think that I would handle things differently.
Can I address the hook on? I don't mean to cut you off, is there one?
No, I wish you would.
And you'll continue to bear the comment, so. We had a work session on this about two weeks ago. It was set on the agenda. We asked Mr. Katie, Mr. Garber and Mr. Yorga to come so that they could familiarize us with the issue so that we wouldn't be looking at this for the first time today. At that time, we asked them about their wishes, or Mr. Yorga's wishes, about whether or not he would want to allow you to be able to hook up to the tile. The way I understood it at that time was that there was contention between the parties. You had lawsuits, and it was his preference that you not be allowed to hook up to it. And I think that the way we put it to him and Mr. Katie was, that's something that you parties are going to have to discuss prior to today as to whether or not he might want to change that position. I don't know if you've had any discussions at all about that.
You would be the person to ask legally when a tile is in my property, do I have the right to hook on?
I don't think that the drainage chapter and the code sections requires you to be able to hook on to it.
Does it allow it to hook on to it?
It doesn't. I would say that it does not allow you to hook up to it unless this board in its fine means on this application allows for it. So, today would be the day for them to decide, unless we have an adjournment and come back. But this would be the time for them to decide whether you should be allowed to hook up to it. Now, here are the factors that I think have to be considered. I think the applicant's wishes have to be addressed and respected. I think your requests and your desires have to be considered and respected. They've designed a nine, an eight-inch tile, non-perforated through the ground. I'm assuming that they designed it in the most efficient way so it would be the, the less expensive as possible. If, if they were going to allow you to hook up to it, I would imagine, Mr. Garber, you might have to change the size of that tile to accommodate whatever runoff there might be from yours, especially if it's got a lot of water to it. So, it wouldn't be fair to have them install an eight-inch tile that would then be overloaded if you were allowed to hook up. Then they would have to make a larger tile, which would cost them more money. That's why I would have been happier if the two parties had discussed, if you wanted to hook up to it, how much, what would the size of the pot, the tile be to accommodate you? And what would be the incremental increase in the cost of that tile? I think that would be a fair way of deciding whether or not you should be, be able to hook up to it. What would be the incremental increase in the cost of the tile for doing that?
And I, just one comment on that. Before we even filed this application, I've got a copy of a letter I mailed to Mr. Prohaska's attorney, November third of last year, that said, um, that we would intend to file this application. I told him what our intent was, and I ended, uh, this, I was just going to read the last, second to last sentence again. George is willing to pay for the entire cost of the tile installation if he is going to be the primary beneficiary of it. If your client desires to use the tile to improve his drainage, we would need to discuss that to determine an equitable proportion of the cost. So, we offered that, and I never received any response from Mr. Prohaska or his attorney to that proposal from November third. So, that's what, and I don't want to start now. We, I think we've, we've tried our best to, to offer that, and I don't want to re-engineer it or, you know, we've got money invested in this to get this far, and we just don't want to have to go back and rehash it all, so.
And, and he does, I mean, the stub coming out here, I mean, he, Mr. Prohaska does have the, have the ability to extend it, rebuild it into his property, so.
Say that another way.
The, that tile outlet structure, or the control structure right there in his property-
That already exists.
Already exists, and there's already a tile stubbed into his property to the south of that. I mean, this old one, I mean, Mr. Yorga's is going to be coming around to hook up, up to the existing tile further north. Uh, but Mr. Prohaska could still tap into, up at that box and extend that further. So, he, he has the opportunity to extend the tile or rebuild the tile.
I'm trying to justify that with the comments that I've heard about that tile presumably is filled.
This stretch down here is.
Yeah.
Uh, from, from this box on, I think that's fine.
That is totally plugged and fixed historically, probably twelve times in the last ten years. I think that it's historically plugged.
At the, at the structure?
You have offered that you could inspect. There's no tile control starters on there. Why is there still water in it?
There was a repair up, up here that was-
There was a repair, but it's, it's plugged again. It plugged, it plugs with, with tree roots. If you go in there, it's plugged, it's plugged again. There's no water going through that, that control box. It's stopped. It's plugged now. You're trying to put extra load on an outlet that doesn't work. Because I can, I can say, yeah, go ahead and put this in there, but if you don't do anything with that, that tree liner, with those trees, nothing's going to work, because it's not working now. Adding another line to it is certainly not going to help it.
Can I comment?
Uh, we, when we televised it and went in and cleaned the tile, and we found a tree wood blockage right under the road, and we can't figure out how that got there, but we cleaned that blockage out, the tile worked fine.
It does not work now.
Well, maybe there's something else in there.
Well, yeah, when we fixed it, and the previous owners fixed it, the raves have fixed it, in a line where it doesn't show, just at the north edge of your picture, those trees, is where we fixed it several times. The raves have fixed it several times, and I'm sure it's plugged in there again because of the way the water's down. And it's also been plugged once by a tree on the north edge of Lurie's property. So, part of the objection I have, and it really makes no difference, is if you don't do anything which you said that you were planning on, putting the new tile in perhaps you're there, nothing's going to work. I mean, what you're putting in is futile because there's no outlet. If there was, the water would be running. That tile has got some problems with it that's existing in there now, but it works. It will drain it if the outlet works.
Well, that's our problem to deal with.
Well, it's mine. It's my outlet also.
Well, you aren't draining anything out of there, though.
Yes, I am. That, that tile works. It will drain. It drains slowly, but it works.
But as far as the, the application that's before the board, that's a collateral issue. I don't-
Well, I don't believe it's collateral issue. If it doesn't work, how would my putting tile, tile-
I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to the board. Let's, let's take a break for a second.
How would my construction of that control box affect Mr. Yorga if that tile wasn't working?
What I understand, what I understand you debating right now between the two of you is the effectiveness of the tile upgrade from the edge of your property to the north.
Yes.
And I would have to agree that that is not a specific issue for the board to address today. I do believe it is somewhat relevant to what we're talking about, but not directly. I'm always glad when, when landowners come to these things and talk, because sometimes they don't talk at all. So, I want you to talk. I want it to be relevant to what we're doing today. Let me just add that the board is here doing what they're doing because landowners don't always agree, and that's exactly what's happening here. The fact that you made an offer to install it with the entire cost, with him not being able to hook up to it, is relevant, but it's not decisive on what the board can or should do. The board has the opportunity and the authority to accept or approve this application and your engineering plan. It also has the authority to amend it, and Mr. Prohaska is correct in that this is something that could last for, you know, fifty or a hundred years. I don't think he said the number of years, but it, this is something that could be in the ground for fifty to a hundred years. So, let's get it right. Um, the board does have the authority, if they chose to do so, to tell you to go and talk again about whether or not Mr. Prohaska wants to look into what it would cost to design a larger system that he could hook up to. I'm assuming your response would be, then you would have to pay the incremental difference in putting that in. So, we may, the, the board could adjourn, for example, and say, go talk. We'll give you two weeks to figure out if you guys can agree on a design that is acceptable, and if you can't, then the board would have to decide if they're just going to go along with the original plan. I don't think you're able to come to a decision on that today because you would need new specs and a plan and a cost to know the incremental difference. So, I don't think we can hash through that right now here today. I would, I would suggest that Mr. Yorga's application and his design is, appears to be sufficient for the purpose for which he applied. We do want everybody to get along. We're here to serve both landowners, and we want to make both landowners as happy as reasonably possible. We do want to give you a chance to work something out, if that can be done. That's up to the board. So, that's the, that's the sticky issue of hooking on. Now, you brought up the issue of compensation and damages. I don't see anything in subchapter Roman numeral five, which addresses individual rights, that, that provides for anything like a compensation for a permanent easement. Because we know when we have drainage districts, and the drainage district puts in a tile on your ground, that they compensate somebody for an easement that's fifty or a hundred feet wide, and you get the going rate per acre of farmland for that area that they take as a permanent easement. I don't see any compensation in this subchapter about giving you compensation for a permanent easement, so to speak. I do see language in here about damages that you would sustain as a result of the construction. At our work session, we talked about whether this would be installed while crops are growing, and if crops were growing, and if crops were damaged, then we would ask you to come back with the amount of crops that were damaged. They indicated to us that they would try to do it in the spring, before crops, or in the fall, after harvest, to minimize the amount of damages that you might sustain. So, in terms of actual damage, I would, I would submit that that is an open amount that we'll have to wait until the project is done to see what, if any, damages caused to your property as a result of any construction that might result from this. I, correct me if anybody thinks I'm wrong, but I don't see any compensation for a, for a taking or for a permanent easement. And it's also their proposal that he would pay the entire cost of the construction of the project. And part of that would be to leave your ground in the same condition as it was before or pay you for the damages resulting from any difference. Any, any comments on that?
No, as long as, but I mean, there's nothing that really says what they can be. I mean, I can ask for it. And I would ask for it now that it was reasonable. I'm not trying to, you know, that, because after they go through with the tile, you know, that you have problems for a few years afterwards, not just the damages for the, for the first year. There, there are some lingering things for a while.
Sure. Yeah, we discussed that.
But there's nothing, you know, there's no wording. I can ask for it, but obviously, what you're saying is basically that they don't have to, they don't have to give it.
Well, um-
Unless it's worded by, in the agreement or by the board here today to a reasonable compensation for damages.
Yeah.
Because there's nothing in their plan about it, or nothing's been offered to me. And I would say, I don't remember, I'm sorry, the letter that you, I did not, I don't remember seeing that. It had been such a contentious relationship with, with the lawyers every time they was dealing with it. I may not have read that. I may have offhanded it. But what I don't understand is if there isn't really any contention, if you offered that once, why don't you offer it again? What I'm saying is basically it would change my attitude a great deal about this. If you offered it once, is there a reason for not offering it now?
Can I just, I have a, so, I, I agree with, with what you're saying. I think if you would have accepted it, the plan would have, would have been engineered differently to look at the hydrology and the flows, so it would have been engineered differently to meet the drain, your drainage needs as well as Mr. Yorga's drainage needs. Now, it's after the fact of when it was engineered to meet that. I would, me, one person on this board would say, hey, I agree with Mr. Katie. Well, November is a long time. is a long time ago. If Mr. Prohaska and Mr. Yorgers want to put their heads together and, and want to re-engineer it at your expense, Mr. Prohaska, you know, then, you know, I, I would encourage good farm neighbors, good neighbors in general. But, you know, we're just, we're dragging this on and on, and the legal fees and, and the time and cost to taxpayers and all the landowners and, and experts is building. So I think the reason that it probably is off the table today is because of just the cost and its time to keep moving.
Okay.
How, how large is the outlet where you're hooking on to?
North of here, I mean, it's.
Right where you want to, it's an eight inch.
Eight inch tile.
Is it an eight inch through the Lourdes property all the way?
From here up through there? I believe it is.
As far as we at, televised the tile.
What is it at the junction box?
Let me address this while we're here on that. The tile that is in there, the pond was, there's a reason for it, why the pond was left there, why the control structure was there, and why the tile wasn't fixed. It has two longstanding problems. I have, the Gurkies have gone through it, televised it, we found both problems. But at the time that we found them, I wanted the pond, because of a potential buyer.
Okay.
As a reason, the structure, what the control structure was put in was to maintain that pond, that, that pond after the tile had been fixed, the outlet had been fixed, and if the pond was going to drain, and the potential buyers wanted the pond. So then I put the structure in. But if the outlet is fixed, which it could be easily probably with a non-perforated eight inch even through where those trees are, where it's been plugging historically, I plan on fixing my tile. So now, it's going to drain, because that tile has not sealed it in. It's plugged, it's been hit with ITT coax cable once, and it's been hit with another tile after that. And when we dug it up, I ran that tile up to Mr. Yorgers' fence, we put the riser in there, off at the end of that. It still works, it works very poorly. But if it's fixed, it's going to work again. It's probably going to overload the outlet. And now, my other question is, once he has a tile in Mr. Yorgers' field, he does a lot of tiling, he can pattern tile that whole side hill, which is quite a few acres, which is definitely going to overload the whole system. And he's above me, so of course it'll go out first. So he's going to affect my drainage if I want to drain that pond. So I, you know, that, that's my objection to it. Like I said.
Are, are you saying that you don't even care if the pond's there or not?
I, here again, that land's for sale, it's for, was bought, I bought it, I farm it, but it was bought for development. I have several people that are interested in properties, both industrial and, you know, home properties, building homes. The reason it was there was Grand Giovanni was interested in that, to put their, to put their facility up. And they had made offers, and we had, we had talked about it, and I had told them that that pond was, that was there at that time was not normal, there was something wrong. And I had, the Gurkies were supposed to be coming to fix it, because he, he had fixed it prior to this, years before, and knew where it was flooding. Well, when, and I said, when they get here, they'll fix it. Well, the principals of Grand Giovanni over a period of time said, well, we're kind of planning on maybe using the water feature. Well, that's why I put the control structure in after they fixed it, because I didn't want to lose the water feature, because the potential, so I'm not saying that, I don't need the pond, I kind of like the ducks and geese and the swans there, but I, if, if the outlet is fixed once, if we have a sufficient outlet, I will go ahead and fix those two, two points. And it's, it's working now poorly. I don't think adding to it's going to make it work any better, and if he does decide to pattern down that, there's nothing you can do about it after he's, once has the tile across the property. And then they can totally overload the system, which is overload already. It's a very poor drainage system, as you can drive up there and see today. The water down, or north of here, within maybe a quarter of a mile, has been almost over the road at times. If there's a significant water issue, rain issue, it will be over the road again. I think that there's plans to, to put new tile in, up there. The dirt that was hauled in is basically on the very north end, it has not impacted the pond, it did not go in where any water has ever stood. But when the water backs up, if we get a significant rain, I can't get along that fence. And that's basically, it's like a road for someone that wants to go to the back or to go to the front. Because if the water backs clear up to that, to where that driveway comes in, I can't get into the field without driving, you know, without driving through, through the mud. So that's why the fill is there, and it is not in any, there's never been any standing water in that little edge. And it's no higher than the road, which, which is a natural dam already. So the elevation is no higher, so it doesn't, it's not going to change anything. It's just going to have to dig a little deeper to go through the tile.
I have a question for Matt. The proposed tile, new eight inch, would hook up to the existing tile going to the north. And the existing tile that is in Mr. Prohaska's land, it outlets to that eight inch as well? You proposing a Y hookup to that existing tile to the north?
Correct. So essentially, it's, it's the same tile draining both properties right now, to the north of that road. Mr. Yorgers would put in a Y connection to it, run a new one down, but it would still continue to penetrate into Mr. Prohaska's property.
That, that landowner to the north is a different private party than Mr. Yorgers is negotiating with and dealing with on a private basis. So to address your comments about overloading the system, it appeared to me that from Matt's aerial photographs, the most affected area right now is about two acres of area of ground that is unfarmable, and that's the primary reason for wanting to drain for agricultural purposes. He does have a natural easement right to have this water come downgrade to you. What he can't do, as we all know, is he can't change the force or the scope of it so that it starts to erode your property or to damage your property. If you feel like he pattern tiles his ground, and then that, he puts that in that eight inch unperforated that goes through your ground and then hooks up to that Y, and if you were, if you were to believe that that was backing up your tile and affecting you negatively, that would be a civil issue between you and Mr. Yorgers. It's something we need to consider, because we don't want to approve something that's going to create a problem. But it appears that, in the past, Mr. Yorgers has been draining his water through your eight inch. It doesn't appear to me that he is at this time proposing to put more water through that eight inch than what he probably has been done in the past. Is that a fair statement engineering wise?
I think Mr. Yorgers just wants it restored back to a condition that it was a few years ago. That, you know, that, that eight inch tile was draining both properties sufficiently to be able to farm this, this area.
Do you have an aerial of the Yorgers' property further to the south to let us see if there's any concern about him increasing the flow of water into that tile?
I got a question. Go ahead with yours. But one of the things we asked about was, Denny asked on the, if he could hook to it, and the comment was that you don't want the added water hooked to it, but you're still outletting an eight inch to an eight inch. How does that change anything?
Well, I mean, our.
At the end, you're still eight inches.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's true.
So would it matter which one you hooked to?
My belief right now is that's fine, it works fine. And if, if Mr. Prohaska would clean out his tile, and that there would be more water created going through that eight inch tile, and if they need a bigger one, it would be in all of their best interest to negotiate with the landowner up there to put in a bigger tile and share the cost of that. But that's not necessary now, but, but that's what was, would have to happen, because obviously, I mean, it's in everybody's best interest that this, that this water go away. It doesn't do George any good to drain into an eight inch tile and not have it take his water that we're trying to get rid of. So, I mean, I, I think that's a, something we might have to deal with, maybe, maybe not.
But to not allowing to hook up to the tile because of the capacity, the capacity's still restricted at eight inches.
Right.
It doesn't matter which tile he hooks to, it's still the same restriction.
Yeah.
So is that, is that a big enough issue today?
I don't think it is.
And I agree with you 100% that if they would both go talk to the landowner, next landowner, get a larger tile and clean the outlets and stuff like that, but that isn't what we're here for today.
Right.
But I think that should be what we're here for today as well. Let's fix it right instead of half.
Yeah, but you can't play what if either.
Well, we can't tell the downgrade landlord what to do either. That's a, that's a private matter as of right now. But let me, let me make a couple observations. One is that, Mr. Prohaska, I think you have to seek independent legal advice from what I'm saying to you, because I don't represent you today. But one thing that I don't think a person can do is to fill up, you know, let water gather and form a pond, and then decide, now I want to empty the pond, like emptying a bathtub, and then plugging or overloading that eight inch. That is what I think would be a potential violation of, of easement rights. So I want you to think about that for a minute, that if.
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're saying. What you're saying is I can't, I can't repair my own tile and go to the existing.
No, it's not what I said. If you had a, a control valve, and then you wanted to drain that pond as quickly as possible so that you overloaded the eight inch tile downgrade, I think that the adjoining landowners could have an issue with that, because you are changing the flow.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure, but there is, is an injunction on that control box, so it won't be used.
Understand.
So that's not an issue.
I'm just saying that that's one example of.
Oh, yes. I'm understanding, yeah, and then let it all out at once, back everybody's up, but that's not, that's not going to be a possibility here unless I go against a court order that I signed.
I just wanted to address that, because we're all talking about that eight inch downgrade being overloaded, I didn't want, that would be one example of how it could be overloaded in a way that might not be correct.
And as far as, I've talked to Doug and Lourdes before and fixed the tile on Lourdes, I don't understand why it really would be a big deal if you've got an agreement with them to put a new eight inch in, why do you complain about it, take that ten inch? It's the same amount of digging, it's just slightly more money. And it would be more sufficient, I think, because this is not good drainage here. This, this area is poorly drained, it's obvious, you can, you can drive by and you see it. It's a basin, it's never going to drain well, no matter what you put in it, because it's always going to drain slow.
I guess I have a question with, you know, you kind of made it sound like you don't know if you want to keep a pond, or the ability to have a pond, or if you want it drained. And then, if, if the possibility is there as far as George hooking up to yours, he's got to know, I mean, he's got to have, I mean, I'm kind of leaning towards the extra tile for sure, because he's got to know that he's always going to have drainage, no matter what you do or what's done with your property. And also, the, if it's for sale, the new landowner, you know, so.
Right. Well, if I did do anything as far as the pond goes now, like I said, I'm enjoying from you, from using that one there. And I understand that, I have offered in times past to pay for damages when I backed water up onto George, and it, it wasn't accepted then, he just wanted an injunction. I think I offered that when you were there too.
We don't want to get into.
But anyway, that's, that's not an issue. And I realize I can't, that's illegal to do that, and it's wrong to do that. If I put, if I saved the pond, I would put a new control box and put it in that large area there that it wouldn't affect anybody, and it would not back onto George, and I would deepen, deepen the pond and build the pond into the area to the lower left, the upper corner there about by the eight. Because there is a tile that runs, the existing tile runs all the way along through that part and up through, okay.
Top button.
Top button.
I think you have to hold it.
It starts here, it runs down, and then up into here. And it's plugged in two places. It's plugged right here, it's plugged right there. Partially plugged, but it still does work. So if I did put it, I would deepen this part here and put a control structure there, or take that tile out if it goes into here. And I would not back it all the way up, because that's, it's too big, and it's, this is, this is mostly never a pond, it's just muddy. The pond is formed back here. So, you know, what I'm saying is, basically, I really don't have an objection to it. If I'd be allowed to hook on it, but if that's not an option, I do object to it, because, you know, I think it's, if he does not, the plan does not address more water, and like I said, nobody said anything about pattern tile, but he can pattern tile. Once he has a tile on his land, he can tile that whole side hill, which is definitely going to overload. But it doesn't address the extra water that he's planning on putting in there. And it, it's a system that doesn't work now. It has never worked correctly, even when the tile is not plugged, it will, water will back up and drop those, those ponds out. So this is not going to help my situation if I want to farm, because it's adding extra water into the existing outlet that is insufficient.
But it was taking all that water in the beginning when everything was working, wasn't it?
No, not at all, not at all.
Did it drain your land originally?
It drained our, our land perfect.
His, his land is, as you can see, it starts right here, so that's, that isn't the really wet spot. He has two acres that he's talking about right there, that's being affected right here on that spot. This is the rest of it that it was draining, the tile is in there, and the, the part that needs to be drained on my side. This is the part that's just the outer edge, that I've, I've only seen water back up on there a couple of times, but it has done that. But it's not always, it does not always have to do with the, with the control structure. When you get a heavy rain event, the outlet won't work. I mean, it, it has no place to go. If you drive by there right now, this is all underwater right here. Well, that's where this drains to. Well, it will drain first, but it's not going to go anywhere until this whole area here is gone. The water has almost run over the road here before. This is not, you know, going to help anything as far as draining my land.
And that's a separate issue that, I mean, there is a solution in progress that's being resolved right, right now. So, I mean, again, that's kind of a separate issue for what we're talking about right here.
Well, but it's still, it impacts it, in fact, that tile doesn't work well now. Maybe it'll work better when you get an outlet down below.
I'd like to, I'd like to sum up what I see happening here, and give both parties an opportunity to respond to it, and then I think it would be time for you to start delivering on what you want to do, but this appears to me to be kind of a classic situation of two landowners that haven't gotten along. And in this case, Mr. Yorgers wants to have his own line through your ground, so that he can know that he's going to have drainage at least through your ground. Now, downgrade, that's, you know, it'd be another matter that has to be worked out. And in this case, you've indicated that your eight inch is workable, it has two places repaired. To me, that begs for the argument that you really don't need the right to hook up to his new eight inch if yours is still usable. What's your response to that? If yours is still usable, why do you need to hook up to his?
It is an old tile, very old tile, and I'm not, I'm sure it doesn't work as well as a new one would. If there is a tile through there, and that tile is not working, right, or fixing those two, my thought right now is fixing those two spots would make it much better. I'm not going to say that it's going to work 100%. So if it did work 100%, if I could hook on to the other one, it would, it would, it would alleviate the, alleviate the problem.
So if it, if it were working, that would alleviate the necessity to require a, to be able to hook up to Yorgers?
If it does work, yes.
Then, the other concern that you've raised is that the possibility that Mr. Yorgers may pattern tile his ground to such a degree that it may increase the flow of water, if it, if it went through your ground in a, in a non-perforated eight inch, but came out and discharged into another tile, it might overload the system. I would say that, that's something that we can't control today. We can foresee that that's a possibility, but I would say that if Mr. Yorgers did something like that, that you would have remedies for him changing the flow runoff from him, his walk from his field. And that's a civil right that you have as a claim against him if he were to do that. Now, if, if the board were to approve this drain through your ground, it does not give him the right to do whatever he wants, upgrade from you. It does not give him the automatic right to put in all kinds of tile and increase the flow of water from his ground, or the rate at which it flows onto your ground. So we're, the board would not be giving him. So we're, the board would not be giving him permission to do that. If he did that, that could be a cause of action against.
Legally, nothing is stopping him from doing it. The only recourse I would have would be to sue if he changed.
Just like anybody else, just like anybody else.
He could, he could, he could put what tile he wants in.
He could, but you'd have the, the course of action you would have would be to agree a claim against him just like anybody else in the same situation. Approving the application would not give him any more right to put more water on you or any less right. We wouldn't be changing his rights in any way. We would not be approving the, more water coming through that eight inch. You would have to wait and see if that would happen. And if that happened, if you had a cause of action against him, then you'd have to assert that.
Well, my question to the board would be, if he's planning on putting, and I didn't know that, I'm not sure that it says that in here. If he's planning on putting new tile for Mr. Luer and negotiating that, the cost between an eight inch and a ten inch is probably pretty minimal. It would alleviate a lot of, maybe some of the problems of the future.
And you would want it to be perforated as well.
Well, I have the tile running through me, you mean?
No, I, I thought you were proposing that, that Yorger put a larger tile through your ground that you could hook on to.
Only, only through Mr. Luer's ground.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Where the, where there's been historically a problem, the tree roots.
I misunderstood you. Go proceed with that.
No.
If he did that, what?
If he did that, I mean, if he put a ten inch there, it would, it would probably improve the flow of all of us, of his and mine.
Sure.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about here. This ground runs through and into, through this, through Luer's ground. This right here is where historically it's been fixed time and time again with tree roots.
But I don't think that the fact that there's some drainage problems downgrade is an argument that the applica, that the application shouldn't be granted. Because I don't see in this case that Mr. Yorger is talking about increasing the flow of water that he's drained in the past. It looks like it's the same amount of water that he's trying to drain that he has in the past.
At this time.
At this time. And I understand your concern about how that might change, but we can't address that at this point or try to anticipate or think negatively that he's going to do that. We just don't know. But I guess one issue that I think remains is whether you should be able to hook up onto it. And if you were able to hook up onto it, you would still, we would still want it to be a non-perforated tile. Because if it were perforated, then you would kind of lose control over the drainage of your pond issue, right?
I, yeah, I think so.
So you'd still want it to be a non-perforated?
Where, where they're proposing to, where they're proposing to put it, it probably would not affect any pond that I. Any pond that I would, would want to keep. Because as I said, if I would want one, if I do put one in, it would be here.
Matt, what about, what about the proposition that there's always been an eight inch? If, if Yorger puts an eight inch in, why shouldn't Perasko be able to put a hook on to it if it's always been eight inch in the past? I mean. There may be a sharing of cost issue, but just purely, just from a purely engineering, hydraulics or whatever issue perspective.
I mean, it would, it would probably work the way it has in the past if they're wanting to jointly, you know, especially if Mr. Perasko is the downstream person in that, that low area. If he wants to upsize it to improve on his situation, you know, a larger pipe would get more water out of there for those, you know, heavy rain events, wet, wet springs and those sort of situations would probably in fact be more beneficial to him than Mr. Yorger.
It would drain George's property slower if Denny hooked on, is that correct?
That's always the age old question if this water drains first.
Right. Well, the top, normally it's the top. I mean, and he, and George is above me normally at the top. If, when this thing causes a problem and backs up and the tile is working, when that tile is open through Luer, the top drains first before the bottom.
Do you agree with that, Matt?
Sure. You get the flows downhill.
I know some engineers that don't want to commit to that theory that you can predict upper, lower water is going to drain, get in a tile first. Some engineers will refuse to say, I can't, I can't tell you that.
This is how I knew that I had a problem years ago when the problem started when Grand Geavon was looking at it and the pond developed was because it had always drained mine first and then the next down north of there will drain afterwards. Well, north was drained and I still have pond. So when you have that, which we've had for the last year or so, that tile is not working.
So then you go back to the larger, the larger tile through the north property, then it's pushing water onto Mr. Yorger's other property quicker too. So, I mean, it's kind of a whole combined joint.
Well, that's where the water is going to go anywhere. It does now.
Right. Hartwood, what's your response to the proposition that if it's been an eight in the past and your client's going to put in another eight, why not let him hook on to it if an eight has handled it in the past?
You know, I don't know that our position has changed really since November 3rd when I wrote Mr. Holt's letter, that that would be a matter that would have to be negotiated.
Sharing of the cost?
Sharing of the cost and, you know, and, you know, I'm talking about largely engineering costs because that would, that would be more money.
And we're, I'm, we're open to that. If Mr. Perasko was willing to talk to you about that right now, would you take five minutes to go talk about it?
I, I don't know that I am in a position to do that today. What I would, would recommend and hope that if the board would take action on our application today and grant it, we can always talk. Even after that. I mean, I, I, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I just don't want to.
By accepting your application, there's no reason to talk at that point. The problem, problem is I got, I got one guy that wants to hook on and another guy says, no, you want to accept that he can't hook on and you're not willing to talk right now. Or should we table this? Look at tabling this, let you talk and then bring it back to us?
Well, you're talking, we've got seven months to talk and there's been no talk.
This is our first meeting here.
And I, you know, and I, I don't have a lot of confidence in those talks being productive. I don't want to really delay it anymore.
We not only have to think about Mr. Perasko, we have to think about every landlord that's going on that property for the next fifty to a hundred years.
Sure.
And what I would say to the board is I'm offering right now, if they let me hook on damages are reasonable by what you deem, I don't have a problem with it. You know, if, if, if I have the right to hook on to that tile at some later date or the property owner does, I will withdraw my problem if, if we're going to get damages for the prop damages or whatever.
Well, let me, let me ask you to assume this. Let me, let me ask you to assume that your objection doesn't stop this application. And let's say that they do the project in such a way that they leave your ground the way it was so it actually results in almost zero damages and the court doesn't give you anything for a permanent easement. So in a way, let's assume that that were to occur. I think what they're looking for is would you pay twenty-five percent of the project cost or fifty percent of the project cost? I, I know that's what they're looking for. That's what I think that they would be willing to consider. And the board might think that that might be a fair resolution to this.
Well, we are discussing, Mr. Katie doesn't want to discuss, but Mr. Yager is spending, I'm not sure what this project is going to cost or what it's costing, Eric. And he's doing it presumably for two acres. I find that a little hard to plan.
You're worried about an ulterior motive of draining additional ground?
Yes, and, and no, and historically, there's a tile line there. Historically, he has taken tile across tile lines before illegally. And if he does, there's a lot of property above there. If he runs through that hill that's in District Three that's not in that district, if he, if he does that, then it's going to really overload.
Do we have a private tile map for that section that Mr. Yorger, the property is in? It looks kind of unremarkable in terms of.
There's a, there's a knoll there that there's District Three, District Three stops about the middle of that property right there.
High point is, is.
Right there.
Right in this area.
And this is a different district on the south side than it is up north.
But the north side's not a district, right?
It's not a district. As far as I know, it's not a district.
Well, we don't, we don't want to.
It should be probably.
That whole area is not a, a district. It's, it's private tile. It's not a drainage district.
Does everybody agree with that?
Well, District Three is a drainage district and that's important. So even though there's no, no county tile in it, it's still a district.
It's still ended water.
It's a district.
Still designated.
But, but north of that, there's no district.
There's no, no tile in the district. It's, it's, I think designated as, would be designated as another district. It's all mapped out. It's just there is no tile in there that, from the landowner.
So Yorger, do you agree with that?
Can you find a tile map for it?
I can.
There's not, there's not one that exists.
For what?
For that district to the north.
No, I can't. But there is, if it was designated a district that it is not, it is, would be designated because it's that, it would be its own district if, if the landowners would decide.
Let me try to.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so let me try it. I want you to all stay calm. All right? The way I understand it now is that map shows a kind of a redder area, which is District Thirty?
Three.
Three. Mr. Yorger, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Perasko is saying there is no tile, there's no county drainage tile in that section that we're looking at right now. Okay, so we all agree to that?
The section above, not the red part, but I'm not sure about that.
So Matt.
There's no tile in, in that, the tan area.
Okay, but so Matt, if you could put the cursor on that line that runs northwest to southeast to the property, the red, the red area. Yep, that's a watershed boundary line, is that correct?
That's a drainage district.
It's a drainage district.
It's a, it's a boundary line because it's a, it's a watershed, correct?
Well, it's a drainage district. Watersheds are not, drainage districts are political boundaries. They don't necessarily follow watersheds. I just wanted to make sure.
They, they normally do. They should, but I understand there's a difference. So for the sake of this argument today, we're going to assume that that is a watershed boundary line and the water in the southwest quarter of that section will drain to the south and the water in the upper two thirds is going to drain maybe to the north?
And legally, all that, all that tan could be drained into his new area.
I understand. That's what we're going with. It's Mr. Yorger, what's your thought?
Okay, Matt, put your, that, that's the only amount area. There is a tile that I put in that goes clear to the railroad track. How do I push this? Sorry. Okay, there's just a little area right here. There, there's a high ridge right there and there's a tile that goes here that takes it all the way to that spot right there. So Denny is wrong in saying that this tan area will go in there.
I said it correctly, I didn't say it wrong.
There may be, at the very, very most ten inches.
So you have plans to do more than that?
Well, who knows what will happen down the road, whether it's me or someone else or whatever.
Exactly. This is what I'm saying.
Well, we, we have to consider the possibilities. That's, we don't need to get, don't get hyped, don't get, don't get bombed up.
Denny, would it, would it be fair to say that you plan on, you planned on fixing those where the existing tile is, correct? And you're going to drain it? If you were going to build a pond off to the side of it, that would affect that tile, correct?
No.
Would it make more sense?
Actually, it would make, it would, if I do build that, it would relieve some of the pressure on the outlet.
Would it make more sense to put a non-perforated tile through your property where the existing tile is? And then, I, I'm talking here. If you paid half, George paid half and saved George half the money and you can both hook on to it?
I'm really not willing to do that.
Or am I not liberty to say something like that?
That's okay, but I'm really not willing to do that because if I fix my tile and talk to Luer and put a, a new, a new non-perforated tile through there, my problem's gone. It'll drain me and it'll also drain George's at two acres if I, if I, if I keep the water down because of the control structures out of the, out of the picture now with the tile supply. It's not working.
Is it wrong for me to assume that the tile going through your, your ground right now is perforated?
Yes.
So there's a difference there that you might not?
There's actually, there's actually two. I showed you the one that, that curved up around. And later on, there's another one that was, we put in, another plastic one. It was put almost up to the fence. So if the, if the drainage.
Let me stop you for a second. Right. That's a feature that you would like is to have it perforated so it could drain constantly if you wanted it to drain versus if it were not perforated, all you could do is hook up to it, which would not give you as effective drainage, is that right, Matt? Is that what I'm saying? That's why I'm saying that putting that perforated tile may not be what he wants.
I said non-perforated when I said it.
You said.
Non-perforated.
Right. I don't think you would want that. Because I think you'd want it to be perforated.
Well, non-perforated was, was my idea. Gurkies came out and were going to propose this. And George was supposed to be there. George never showed up, but this is what Bob Gurke told me. But anyway, his plan then, what Bob told me, was to come across here with a non, with, with a tile and go all the way across and into his, which I said, you know, it'd be fine. I'd let him do it if this was non-perforated underneath where it went through that priming area. And I think that's where the non-perforated idea came from. I don't really care. If, if he's running it over here, it's not going to affect any ponds. If he's going here and there, he's going through an area that I don't want upon. I wouldn't try to, so it makes no difference whether it's perforated or not perforated. My opinion, I don't care. Hopefully, the new, whatever is proposed from up above will alleviate a lot of these droughts. And it'll be a, the reason the pond's there is because it won't grow a crop anyway. I remember Gurke saying, why do you want a pond? And I said, I like, I like the ducks and the geese and the swans better than. This area that everybody that drives by, seventy-five percent of the time is weeds because it drowns up. It won't drain.
I would suggest that the board consider this. And I'm spitballing too, is that based upon the history of the landowners and characteristics of the land and the potting, et cetera, the applicant is proposing to put in a perforated pipe?
Non-perforated.
Non-perforated.
Sorry, thank you. I'm not thinking about that right now. Put in his own tile in, paying for the entire cost. He would have to compensate Mr. Perasko for any damage that might result from doing that construction. At this point, he is preferring that there not be any hookup. And I'm sure that's for the sake of just being independent and not having to worry about what a neighbor does. I think that if the adjacent landowner, in this case, Mr. Perasko, were to come forward and say, I would like to hook up on to it. And if he offered to pay a percentage of the cost of the tile, that might be a good reason for allowing him to hook up to it. In this case, we don't hear him offering anything at this point. I think you might want to consider whether or not you want to adjourn it to give the parties an opportunity to negotiate that point or just go forward and just say, we're just not going to let anybody hook up to it because there hasn't been an offer on the table as of now and now is the time. That's, I think, the issue that you've got to look at is do you want to give them more time to negotiate or not? And this issue, there's this issue here about whether or not the applicant, and I'm, I'm trying to keep this generic because this could happen in any situation. An applicant says, I want a, I want a tile through your ground to alleviate drainage on my property. And it's only two or three acres. And then lo and behold, it turns into eighty. You've got to consider that. And you have to look at the topography here as to whether or not that might occur. Now, obviously, if that did occur, you couldn't be faulted for that because you're not supposed to assume that somebody's going to do something that's improper. And if that were done, then Mr. Perasko would have the remedy in the court of recourse if the applicant did change the flow of water in any way that affected the drainage on his land. So I understand his concern that it's only going to drain two and a half acres and thousands of dollars are going to be spent. Is there an ulterior motive of draining more ground? Well, there's nothing in the ground right now doing that. They're telling us that there's nothing, no plant specifically. Could there be? Yeah, there always could be. But gee, I think you have to know that if something like that were done, there'd be another lawsuit, but that's between that.
If you plan, I mean, if down the road you decide or someone decides to pattern tile, would the eight inch be big enough?
I, I believe so. I asked Matt if he had a chart because there's charts out that show that an eight inch will take so much watershed. And I believe that an eight inch is planted for the amount of, of that watershed. And the other thing, I'm not sure that there are no tile in my property coming through because it was too wet for us to prospect to look for them because we never had a problem. I had no reason to look for them until the, you know, Denny put his control structure in. But I, I do believe that years ago, I, I just don't see them stopping at the fence line. Usually they go on through to the next neighbor. You know, it, it may be a small size, but I do believe there's, there's tile there and we haven't been able to. to find the time to be able to prospect for this tile.
So I have a question then, if, if, if he were allowed to put the non-perforated tile through there and there was no hookup, can he legally put in pattern tile, and as long as he's not overloading his own, it might be an issue with an outlet, but that would have to be dealt with at that time?
Yeah, if he were to pattern tile, increase the flow to eight inches maximum capacity where it hasn't been in the past, then there's a Y hookup, and then it's backing up on Mr. Peraska's ground, but I think Mr. Peraska could have a cause of action against Mr. Yorger. But I think where you were going is wise, in that we could ask the engineer to say, if he were to tile, private tile the remainder of those acres, would it require a 10 or a 12? And you might say, then put in a 12, because we don't want him to come back and argue about that later. That's something you could act, because you have the ability and the authority to amend the plan, just because they say we want an eight inch, you could say it should be 10 or 12, what's the next increment, Matt? What, what would be obviously enough? Would a 10 be enough, or what are the increments?
I mean, we would need to go double check the, the actual drainage area, but it, it's not a significant amount, I mean, as far as from this, this ridge top here flowing to the north, I, I guess I would assume here with pattern tile, he'd go from that ridge south, southeast, and take it the other way, and only take anything to the north of that ridge up through that property.
And that would help address your concerns.
Well, yes, absolutely, if it was, if theirs went through in the outlet, since they're going to, it seems to me they're saying that they're going to go through Mr. Luer's with, with a new tile, that's what your plans are, that you're going north of my property line.
To hook up to the existing, whether or not Mr. Yorger negotiates something with that property owner to, to rebuild it the rest of the way, I, I don't, I'm not privy-
Well, if it's not rebuilt the rest of the way, it's, it's, it's just going to back up. I mean, you could put in as large a tile as you want, that, the tree-routed one or the, the listing tile is going to restrict it.
I mean, is there anything stopping Mr. Yorger from just continuing on his own tile all the way through to, to his property?
Well, yeah, you said you were negotiating with Mr. Luer, right?
But not even hook up to the old one, just leave, leave the old one totally up to you to, to deal with, and just, so basically, there'd be two independent personal tiles crossing the, that north property.
I see, there's no reason that you couldn't do that.
So, to alleviate the concern about the size of the tile not being large enough, I guess you could ask the engineer to come back with a different specification that would, that would alleviate that concern, and say, does it need to be, what are the increments after eight, 10, 12?
Yeah, 10, 12.
And how much of an incremental increase is there in the cost of construction to clean a larger pipe, or is it relatively the same? Is it just the cost of the pipe need a different size?
Or do we go the opposite way and make it smaller so they can't back up? So it'll allow both places to drain.
Expand on that for me, I'm not following you completely.
If you go bigger, you, you already told us that it could hit the tile and turn around backflow and fill the pond faster.
If they hook up to the existing eight inch, I mean, tile-grade property, right? So you're saying that that would automatically cause a backup?
Well, it could, is what you're telling me, but if you went smaller, it allows both places to hook to the eight inch, and drainage for both.
And overload the power.
You'd both have a chance of draining.
Then we've got to get into their business about, are they going to expand tile down, downgrade?
Well, if they did, it's still a six inch, and you only have so much capacity to get through.
If they, if they increase the size of the pipeline, does it, Luer, it's a neighbor-
But, but the, the problem is, we're not talking about that today.
I understand.
And by, by eliminating that as a conversation, you eliminate the whole discussion of that.
I understand that, but if they had planned their works to go tomorrow, that would be nice to know.
Well, I'd rather do it right.
Then you could put a 10 or 12 inch in, and everything would flow nicely, so they may not want to tell us that, if they don't, then, yeah, your hands are kind of tied.
And we deal with this in drainage a lot, so don't get me wrong, you're only as much capacity as the downhill side.
That's right.
And without knowing what we're going to do on the downhill side, it really is hard to make a decision what we should do today for both of you, because I want adequate drainage for both of you.
So if, if we, he has a good point, we can't put in a 10 or 12 and overload the system. Now, if you have specific plans to improve that system-
Well, I, I'm working with, and we've kind of picked out a route already with Jim Luer, and the, there's going to be a new 24 inch that goes right to my fence line, and I'd be willing to take my own tile, whatever size it is, and go to that 24 and let Denny have total control of his existing tile, then he can do whatever he wants to.
Can you show us on the map where you're talking about this 24?
So 24 inch is going up to this area, right?
Correct, right there. What about from there through the Luer property to get to the Peraska property?
Oh, without an engineer and without a contractor there, we're going to go along the road because Jim has, that, right where he just added his dot, is a wet spot that he would like to drain, and then we would take it kind of along the road and turn up the fence line if we, we could get grade, now we're, we're not sure whether that'll work without a contractor and engineer looking for it, and then I would do that and then drain my own property, and Denny could do it.
And the eight inch that is already there would stay there?
Stay there, and Denny could be able to do whatever he wants to.
Well, the eight inch is going to be, the existing tile is going to be hooked into that 24?
Well, it may not even be-
That's where I think we're at.
We're not sure of the size either, I'm just doing, take care of-
Still haven't heard you, though.
Well, the, the new tile, will it be hooked into the-
The 24.
That would be good.
Will be.
That, that will be, that will be hooked up, and I don't know if that will go into the 24 or not, because this tile now on, on my land goes down to a ravine and goes over, and I do not know if that will be hooked in or not, whether it'll use the existing tile, but that will take the pressure off, this new 24 will take the pressure off of, of all of that old existing tile, so it should drain a whole lot better.
So we're, this is what we're thinking, this is what we're talking about, this application does not have to be granted today, and it looks like you've got, obviously, you've got plans, it might be wise for the board to table this and adjourn, and if your plan is implemented, then I think it might be prudent to put in a larger tile that would alleviate the concern of Mr. Peraska, that you would drain more of your ground and put it under his ground, and if it takes a 10 or a 12, and you can handle that with your new system, I think everybody's happy. So if you do have these plans, and you do want to proceed with them, we might want to wait and see them be done, and then we can determine what should be approved to go under the adjacent landowner's properties, does that seem fair? And I'll, I'll add, that I think there is merit to your application, that it's for agricultural purposes, that in some form it should be granted, but it has to be done in a way that will not affect the adjacent landowner, and he's expressed a concern that needs to be addressed to some degree, so I think, I think your application in, in some regards should be approved, and we want to do it in the best way possible.
Well, keeping in mind that the whole reason that we're here in the first place is because he decided to have this lake on his property-
That's not true.
-that messed us up.
That's not true.
And, and, and also, he's allowed his tile to become blocked, and he hasn't had the decency to fix it, that has forced us to where we are today.
I understand.
And I, and I, and I think that it's very frustrating when, given those, that situation, to now just be tabled and, and, and with uncertainty over what we're going to do, you know, we, we may want, want to do this this spring, I don't think it's likely, but, you know, it, it's possible, and then if you table it, then we've lost that, so then we're, we're relegated to the fall, I guess I just don't know how many what-ifs we have to deal with to get this approved, I think we fall within the requirements of the law, I mean, I think you're, you could approve it and be totally, it'd be a totally sound decision, I just, you know, I, I, the more we come back, the more-
There's a solution, I'm sorry to interrupt you because I know where you're going, and I want to, I want to offer a resolution.
Okay.
Theoretically, the board could say, they'll approve it today, and it's an eight inch, but I want some kind of alternative that, to address this issue about potentially draining more land, more water, what if they approved it and just said it has to be a 12 inch, unless your plans come back and say, we've done everything downgrade, and all we really need is a 10? You know, what if, what if we approve it on the high side, so we know it's going to drain anything that he might choose to private tile in the future, so it's, a 12 will be more than sufficient, they could approve it for a 12, and then if you come back and say, okay, we've completed our project, and, and we have engineering that says 10 will be plenty to drain anything that he might want to drain in the future, it could be amended to 10, or it could be amended back down to eight, but what if we, what if we approve it on the high side to be cautious and say, we'll approve it, but it's got to be at least a 12, unless you come back with other plans to show us that it can be smaller?
I, I don't know that there's any basis in the record that we've got thus far that would support requiring a larger size.
Well, I think there's certain that there might be-
What if we would approve a six inch, not knowing that you're only going to go into an eight inch? That's wrong, that's not treating George right either.
I, I think, yeah, I think there's no basis for that either, we've got an engineer that has come forward and said, eight inch will do this job, and I think that, you know, if Mr. Peraska thought that it should have been bigger, or, or there's other experts out there, you know, I don't know enough to make that call, and I, you know, that's why we rely on these people to, to, to do it.
I have a question for you, you keep saying about Denny's worried about, or, and Denny has said worried about putting more water through his land, if George decides to pattern tile, and he decides that it's got to be a 10 inch to just take his, what, what damage is that doing to Denny's ground if George is putting in enough tile, a large enough tile to handle all of his water, and if he does put in the tile all the way from where he's going to outlet to his other ground, what, how does, how does that affect Denny?
You're not allowing him to drain, you're not allowing him to drain, Denny, if he wanted to part-
Well, he has current, he has current tile.
That's not what the plan says, the plan says that we're going to Y into the, the existing tile, this is something new that we didn't know about.
Right, okay, okay, that's what I, okay.
Because that would affect it differently.
Right, if he's going to take that all the way to his other property-
He's going to take it all the way with his own tile.
That's not going to affect you at all, correct?
It probably wouldn't.
Eight inch or an eight inch in the ground won't make a difference to him.
No, then, then, then is, then basically, it's his own, basically, private tile, if he's not hooking into mine.
Okay, yep.
So I, I'd like to see a resolution today, Mr. Yorger, his counsel and experts have made a good faith effort to work with Mr. Peraska, and, well, only moments ago, where we, was I provided the explanation of why the control box was put in, that was one of my questions, and you were anticipating development, you know, later, and now after all the expensive time and capital is, you know, spent to install the control box that likely contributed to the demise of the current tile, the fact that Mr. Yorger has spent, you know, considerable finances in legal and engineering fees, and, you know, I think re-engineering it to look at bigger tile is, you know, an expense that Mr. Yorger, you know, it could have been brought up a long time ago, and so, and those expenses to put greater tile on the downward side, I don't see that benefiting Mr. Yorger, it's not an improvement for him, it really helps Mr. Peraska, but unfortunately, November 3rd, 2016 documentation wasn't responded to, to initiate further good faith negotiation, so I, I would like to see move forward and, you know, mend the fences, you know, in neighbors, but to bring this agricultural ground back into productivity and, and get some resolution here, the engineering costs, working in, with drainage with, our regular drainage, has shown that engineering costs are massive, why, why would we go back to re-engineering something that we've had since November to potentially re-engineer and maybe split that expense? I don't know what re-engineering would even cost you, Matt, it's going to be considerable.
Right, it kind of depends on how we're-
Right, so-
If we want to go all the way north.
Asking Mr. Yorger to incur that expense at this point just seems, you know, unacceptable in my eyes.
Are you making a motion of any sort?
No, because we're still in public hearing.
All right, good. So George, is that a, is that an option to you, as far as, rather than hooking into that and making a Y, you would just continue that on to your own property?
Right, right.
So, Denny, or whoever purchases the property possibly-
That was a tough answer, you didn't have it all.
The route would depend on what the engineers or the construction people, in order to get decent grade through Jack Luer's, would be, you know, the route made there, is what I'm getting at.
And if that, if you can't get decent grade?
Right, but I'm, I'm sure we can get grade, we, we, we can get it figured out somehow.
But, but if you couldn't, what would happen? You'd have to hook into the eight inch?
No, well, the eight, the, the eight inch, they got decent grade years ago, we can get decent grade today.
Okay.
It's just a matter of where we go with it, is that correct, Matt?
All right, keep going.
Because if, Denny, if you, you said yours is for sale?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and that person might want a pond, and you don't know if they would want the whole thing or not.
Or they might, or they might not want it, they might want decent drainage.
Right, and that's, that's the unknown, that's the unknown, of what even a new owner would want to do.
And I, I take exception to Mr. Katie, I did not create the problem with that, like I said, I came, the one spring I came down the road and that pond was full, mine was full and the other one was empty.
That fact is not relevant to us.
Right, okay.
I want to make one more comment, if, if Mr. Yorger completes the downgrade project as they've explained to us, and if we approved an eight inch and it goes into his own system, then that shouldn't create a problem for Mr. Peraska's property.
Correct.
Are we going to, are you going to require them to hook their eight, eight inch up to the existing line that is in the ground right now, which is all we know that exists right now, or are you going to condition it upon them hooking up to their system? And I don't think you could do that, and so it would be nice to know that that downgrade system were in place, because then there would be a straight system that would not affect the adjacent property.
Definitely an answer.
We don't have that, we don't have it built yet, so we don't know what they're going to do for sure, and I am, I am, I do think you need to consider the fact that they're spending a lot of money, and I think that Mr. Peraska has a valid concern, is it really to drain two and a half acres, or is it to drain another 80 or 60? It would, it appears to me like there maybe is another plan to drain more ground, and if this is an open system, meaning it's an eight inch and it hooks up to what is there right now, it could overflow the system if they pushed that much water through there, so I think, if it remains an open system, it may prove you to require that you put in a larger tile, which is still going to cause a backup, it would be so nice to know if the downgrade system were in place or not.
And George, you're trying to do a downgrade system, correct?
Right, yes, and, and, you know, the plans are there, the bids are let, this, it's going to be done.
Is it that big of a deal for us to table it, knowing this, right this time? You, you were looking at a fall project anyway, when we talked earlier.
Yeah, but it's, it's just more expensive, and, and if I leave the existing tile completely alone, it, it may only require a six to, to drain my, because there's only a small area, there's a high ridge that goes through there, I can't get 60, 80 acre or more than that, you know, it's about 10 at the very most, and I think if Matt listens to his top will not, he can kind of-
And, and so the bulk of it, you know, the easiest drainage ditch is right there, there's an existing tile, I mean, why, why would he send water from here all the way through the rest of this property?
That would be a six inch.
That, that's his system up here as well, which is already-
Where does the existing tile run? The one that goes to the, to the east?
To the east?
To the east, where is that?
That would be wrong to George, that's what I'm saying, it's worth tabling to get the downgrade system.
It comes up and it goes all the way to the road.
All the way to the road on which side of the ridge?
But if you limit it, it's wrong to George.
On the south side of the ridge.
On the south side.
South side of the ridge.
Because that's the only limitation.
Right, that's why the, the north side, you've got to go cut through the hills. Right, that's why the north side, you've got to cut through the hills. The north side that you're talking about, the 10 acres as such, would have to go to the north.
Right, correct. Otherwise it'd already been drained.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I think...
That's what we can say.
What I'm concerned about is if you do that, what is it going to do?
So the maximum you can...
The existing tile does have nothing to do with this north side.
I mean, yes.
So the maximum you can drain is 10.
I mean, the existing tile...
Now with an 8 inch tile.
That's right here, yes.
That one has nothing to do with it.
But that's all that would flow that way.
That's why it goes north if it does get...
Where the ridge is, everything on the ridge goes south.
Right, I'm not talking about...
This here, yes, that would go north because it can't go...
He said, he more or less just said that if that were the case or that were a possibility, it would have already been done.
Here's a concept. You're thinking that, what's the number of acres that potentially can be drained into that 8 inch intake?
Is it 10? Yeah, I mean, we haven't totally measured back.
I guess, I guess a little more, but maybe 12.
Here, what if we were to say, "You could do this, but you would be limited to draining X number of acres and we held you to your word that it's only 12 acres." Would you have a problem with that?
No.
That I think would alleviate the concerns about 60 acres being drained or 40 or 30.
But that was my concern and they were going, the plan here is subjective here, or submitted here, is to go into the existing 8. This is the first I've heard about a new tile being run through lures.
Understand.
So this, that 15 or 20 acres or whatever, say 15 with the 2 on the high side, it's going to overload the outlet if they go into the 8, which is what this plan is suggesting.
Am I hearing you right?
Yes, this plan, they're showing in appendix where the tile is going to go, which goes into the existing tile.
Yeah, I understand.
And I think, I think there's been subsequent discussions since this was put together.
I think the board has to base their decision on what currently exists, not what might exist. We have to assume right now that this is an open system, at least what is presently in the ground. Now, what we're contemplating is, they do have the right to limit this design and this plan. And we're talking now about saying if it only could potentially drain 12 acres, then let's limit their plan to 12 acres. Would that satisfy your concern that he's not going to go drain 60?
Well, I never, I never said 60. That wasn't my...
It's just a number.
I knew about how much he was going to drain. What I'm saying is, if they do pattern tile that and drain it, it's going to overload an already overloaded system.
What I'm saying is, if we said to them, "You can only drain 12..."
I understand what you're saying and yes, that's fine, but they're not going to go through that hill to drain anymore. They're going to only drain what George said, that what he just mapped out, which is 10 or 12 acres or whatever. That's all it's going to go.
Do you have a concern with him draining 10 or 12 acres?
Yes, if he pattern tiles it, the system works poorly now. Now, what it's going to work with with a new tile through there, who knows? The system doesn't work well now. Like I said, there's water over the road.
If he puts it in...
In this area, this is, this is a basin. Hydrosys calls it a basin. I've seen that. It doesn't drain well. It's not going to drain well. It may drain better with this, with this new system that they're putting in now. That's why they're putting a new system in, is because of the problems with the drainage in this area. So yes, if he adds pattern tile into the, that 8 inch that's there, it's going to work. It's going to slow down the drainage of mine. Absolutely. I mean, you know, it's an overloaded system already. It does have fall, but it drains very poorly because it doesn't have enough fall. It has no place to go. Now, if the 24 is in there, who knows what that's going, that is why it's being put in, is to try and drain that area. I'm sure. Now, it will probably work differently then, but right now, hooking into the 8, which is what is in front of us here, and if they do pattern tile it, the two acres that he's proposing, it isn't going to impact anything. You know, because it doesn't get that wet that much unless that lake fills up, unless that pond fills up. But if he does pattern tile it, yeah.
At some point, do you want to close the public hearing? Have you heard enough from everybody? Do you want to hear it?
I can ask you to.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing.
So the next thing the board is required to do is to examine the sufficiency in the form of the application. And I would submit to the board that I've reviewed the application and the code. And I think that there's one shortfall in that. By their admission, they don't know exactly where the entrance and exit and the route would be. So I would suggest to the board that if they approve the application, that they would add the requirement that the engineer go out and measure and locate those points and then file something additional with the auditor's office before they begin construction to show us the points that they do enter, contour, the course and the exit. So I would say that the, that would need to be done to supplement the application. And the merits of the application go to whether or not this is for agricultural drainage. And I would suggest to you that it is for agricultural drainage. One of the issues that has come up is how much agricultural drainage? Are we talking about two acres? Are we talking potentially about 12 or 14? So that's kind of an issue. And then we talked about fixing the points of entrance and exit. We've talked about fixing the course. Specify the tile size. We've been talking about their proposals for 8 and we've talked about the possibility of different sizes. Terms regarding repair, I would suggest that the board require that the applicant be responsible for 100% of the cost of repairing. Terms regarding connections, you've heard, you've heard the adjacent landowner wishes to hook up to it. You have to decide whether or not you want to grant him that right. You do not have to. I think you also have the opportunity to adjourn and give the adjacent property owner that one more chance to negotiate, to say that he'll be willing to contribute something that might be satisfactory to the applicant, that would allow him to hook up. Any damages enter compensation? I think that the adjacent landowner has filed a valid claim for damages, but you can't determine what they are at this point. If the application is approved and the construction is done, then you could gather more evidence about any damages that the adjacent landowner may claim.
How about future damages?
I think that that could be addressed in the repairs section that in the future, that if there are any repairs, that the applicant would be responsible for returning the property to its condition. And that if any damages occur during repairs, that the board would determine what they are at that time in the future. I think you could reserve some jurisdiction over that. So I guess...
I guess things coming up.
I have a question. If, I mean, the current application consists of the tile being widened to the current outlet.
Yeah.
However, it's been discussed during the public hearing that George may be willing to run that separately through other property to his other property, his other land he owns. Would they need to amend their application or is that something we could just, if it was decided to go that way, that we would just specify that that's a requirement?
I don't, I see you taking action, if you took action today, it would be under the facts of the existing system.
Right, we would have to go that way.
If they changed it, then they could, then they could change their 8 inch outlet to another system. And they would have the right to do that if they work with the other property owners to do that. But I don't think you could take action today, assuming that they're going to do anything.
Right, no.
So it's kind of difficult.
Something that would need to be put in writing.
So basically, the question might be, if he did improve the system, that you might require that he hook up to it? You want to consider putting in a term like that? That if, that if he does create his own downgrade system, that you would require him to hook up his 8 inch tile to that system?
To, okay, you lost me.
If he built a new system on the property that they've talked about, might you require that if they do build that new system, that you would require that he hook up his 8 inch tile to that new system? That might be one requirement.
That goes...
Could we also approve a contingent? He hooks up to the new system?
Do what?
Could we also approve a contingent that he hooks up to the new system?
Approve it only if he does hook up to the new system?
Or if he installs the new system is what it more or less is.
And hook up, yeah.
You could do that. You could say, "We'll approve it only if you..."
But then we don't have to meet again. Bids are out. Right, George? Bids are out. It's going to happen. We can approve a contingent that it's hooked to the new system and then they can go along with the whole thing and...
Do you guys have any, already legal objections? Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good at that, that we hook it up to the new system.
Denny?
And then we can do whatever size tile we want.
Denny?
This whole thing will be just draining my property, so when I go through, you know, we can do whatever we want. And Denny has total control of the old system.
Denny, were there any issues?
The old, I see that and what he's saying is absolutely correct outside of the fact that there's an injunction on that box, which would be, that would be my system totally then, but I still couldn't violate the injunction.
You might ask for it to be amended or that it be based upon...
If you would have no issue with that then, if you have your old system and not, I could ask for that injunction to be lifted as long as you wouldn't, you know, and what you would have, basically. No, I'd be good with that. I'd be good with that.
I don't think that the board can make that a condition, that they lift the injunction because we don't have enough information.
I would have to ask for it.
Sounds like they might be, they might be amenable to that.
I mean, we're not, we don't want to get back into a situation where the water, we're getting more water with the, with the, with the, with the box than we are now.
Because if it backs up...
If it backs up, it may back up further onto our property.
And it's going to cause history, yes, in the George's tile.
So I don't think that's, I think we would agree to that today.
No, but the new system might facilitate something that might be more workable.
Sure.
And if the new system is in place, then you might have better grounds to get the injunction modified some way. But I think the board has to take the decision that we can't take into consideration anything that might happen with the injunction because we have no control over that. But it sounds pretty reasonable to, and if I can just kind of verbalize it out loud, to make it, at this point, it's an 8 inch proposed, not berated pipe, only on the contingency that they install a new downgrade system. And they talked about 24 inch. Can we specify 24 inch because that's what your plans are?
No, no, I don't think they're talking, I don't think they're talking about that system. They're talking about the new one through lure.
That's what I'm saying.
So it's 24 inch coming in from the north on George's ground?
I'm just referring that as the new downgrade system, the 24 inch. So contingent upon them constructing a new 24 inch tile downgrade from...
That's not what they're...
And by hooking into the 8, basically, by hooking in the existing tile that's there.
Right, but I don't know that we want to...
They'll need a 24 there, I think.
Are you ready to specify sizes or is that...
On that, on that run?
They don't know what the run size is going to be.
I think that's set because it's a larger city project.
The 24 inch, so that is set.
Right, but that's north of this.
Okay, okay.
What about between, do we know?
No.
On the lure property?
That, that piece we don't.
Well, it's going to be larger than 8.
But it'll be contingent that they hook to their...
Because all it's taking is there because of his water.
So I can do a 6.
No real concern about the size?
No, no concern.
No, as long as he's not, if he's not hooking into my, into the existing tile, it's there. I don't have a problem with that.
Do we have to specify 8 inch going through Denny's then? You just said it could be a 6.
You can't hook into it, so it won't affect it.
Now, if you do create a new downgrade system, did you want to have the flexibility of putting in larger size than 8 through Denny's run? Or do you want to come back to us if you want to amend it?
I don't know. Or smaller.
We're only draining 10 acres.
Okay, so you're okay with 8? And if you do decide that your entire system should be larger, you can come back and maybe ask to amend your application, say, "Hey, we actually want to do 10." So you're okay with 8 for now. So you want to approve an 8 inch? Only on the, only in the event that they install a new downgrade system, we'll do the adjoining process?
Yep.
No hookup?
Right.
So just pretty much per the application stating the...
Condition.
Based on being installed to that new downgrade system.
Sound reasonable?
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the application based on an 8 inch tile being run, presented contingent on hooking up to a new downgrade system.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? We have our fixed points that have to be, does that have to be in the motion or?
I want you to amend the motion to provide that. The engineer needs to provide supplemental information about the entrance, exit and the course.
And I'll make a motion to amend my motion that the engineer determine the entry, the course, the exit and provide that to the auditor's office prior to construction.
I'll second that.
That gives us authorization beyond his property to do that.
Correct. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm sorry.
He would have to be on the property to...
Oh, no, I don't have any problem with that. I still don't think it's probably stated right. The 24 inch that he hooks into that, if he hooks the 8 inch in, what I'm saying is, he's not going to hook into the existing tile. He's going to run his own.
Right.
The downgrade system, is that the 24 inch or is that the whole thing through lure?
That's the whole thing.
The whole thing through lure, as long as that's...
Right, and that's in there.
But no, as far as going on here, obviously they have to, you know.
Was there any other thing that we had to add to the motion?
Anything?
Not that hits me, David.
No, I don't think so. I think you can address that motion. I think we might have one more point that we can do by separate motion. So go ahead. Basically, you want to approve...
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Motion carries. What was the other point? We're still in the original motion with the amendment now.
So if we need to approve the original motion?
With the amendment.
With the amendment then. And then you're saying another motion is going to be...
Any discussion on the original motion?
As amended.
As amended? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
We get to the issue of damages. I don't see any damages that we go over right now, so therefore nothing has to be deposited. So we won't take any action on depositing any amount of money at this point.
Okay.
And then I can work with Nancy and we can print, well, print something up as to what you're finding with today. So we'll check permanence and we'll work on the motion that was filed. And then we're going to wait for the engineer to come with his specifications.
Okay.
That's been...
Thank you, Kevin.
So that is it until now. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, yes.
Now, moving to item 14.
Good job, you guys.
Which is...
Thank you.
Which is the auditor's monthly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report for April.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, it's recorder's monthly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the recorder's monthly report.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we have this discuss action on custodian position.
Speaking with Jody, Hardin County is seeking a full-time custodian to perform maintenance and janitorial duties. Our responsibilities include general maintenance, daily cleaning, outside lawn maintenance, snow removal and other duties to be assigned by the property manager. And so it'll just help with, you know, spreading out some of the duties so we're not extended in paying overtime and/or comp time and actually allow the property manager to utilize some vacation time so he can actually earn that back and take some time off to enjoy life.
It also protects the county to have a backup person.
Right.
Right.
Good contingency.
Right. I'll second it.
Actually, there's discussion.
Oh, that was just a discussion. Oh, I thought you made them...
Yes, we have.
Do you guys have a job description?
We do.
Okay.
Or Jody does.
And when we post this, do you want me to post the position with the motor vehicle release, record release form?
Yes, please.
Like the secondary roads? Okay.
Yep, we talked about that. And if you can create a spot so they could include any certifications, anything like that. They have electrically, mechanically, stuff like that. And then the other important thing is, since... And then the other important thing is, since they do do some work at the sheriff's office, they are subject to a very thorough background check.
And that's something that happens after.
Right, but just, it just needs to be put right out there that, you know, so, okay.
Okay, so on, on that, are you finished with the custodian, or are you beginning to direct me on what you want to do?
We're just going to allow Jody, let Jody know that he can advertise for-
Okay, well, I've got that.
Okay, then go ahead and proceed.
How often do you, how much do you want to advertise? Do you want to do it twice in every paper, once in every paper? Do you want to include the South Harden City Review, just legal papers? What do you want?
I think we should include all of the newspapers myself, so that all areas get-
How many times?
Do you want, yeah.
Tw- what?
Twice?
At least twice.
Okay. And is there an application then, my honor? It is May twenty-sixth, is what you've said.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I post that right away?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any action other than that? Jody would be doing the hiring, so I guess the action would be upon us, whatever. So we're done with that. Next is application for liquor license. Owl Falls Loyal Order of the Moose.
I will make a motion to approve the liquor license application for the Owl Falls Lodge Number 1331, Loyal Order of Moose. It's for a Class A liquor license. It's a private club with outdoor service and Sunday sales.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a change of status at IRVM.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Megan Dorman as the new weed commissioner, IVRM manager, at a rate of forty thousand dollars per year, effective June twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay. I just found out this morning, so I didn't have anything prepared for you, but I feel like I just need to state that I think that consideration needs to be given across the board to other positions we already have when we're hiring and the starting wages, because it seems like sometimes it's just a shot in the dark, and we just throw out numbers, and we don't understand the consequence of what's going on. And so that is the basis for what I'm saying. Has nothing to do with the, the applicant, the candidate, the position. I understand you're hiring someone that's very, very talented, and I welcome that person aboard. It's not in any way reflective on her. But hiring a starting salary of forty thousand dollars is an insult to those who not only held the position before, but those that left the position and took other positions within the county. Back in two thousand twelve, the person who held that position made forty-two-five, and the reason that that person had that wage is because of the longevity of holding that position for twenty, nearly twenty years. And when that person's position was eliminated and put under the control of conservation, the person hired to take that position over, they, the board at that time stated they were going to downgrade the program, make it a smaller footprint within the county as a department, and save money. And they hired the preser, the person to hold that position at thirty-four thousand in two thousand thirteen. And then they had that person resign and take another position within the county, and the person who just left the position was hired again at thirty-four, and he remained with it for a time period until he moved on to another county. And now we hire this person at forty thousand, and we have people who have positions within the county that require not only a bachelor's degree, the same as this one, but also they supervise up to five people under them at any given moment. They run programming and educational opportunities and do school and classroom visitations. And also, not only that, but oversee, seeing programs presented at the campgrounds in the, the county. It, it just seems like we're, we're throwing a number out there, forty thousand, for a position that doesn't do quite the outreach, the educational component, the overseeing supervision of other employees and stuff, that there are other people within the county that, that do do those things. And I just believe that if I didn't say something out loud, that, that it would be, it would be not fair to them for me to object on their behalf. And so that is where I came from today to say that. So I, like I said, I look forward to her working here, but I'm, I'm very offended that her starting wage is a slap in the face to some other people, particularly in conservation, who do the same type of field work and the same educational background, oversee more people and have more outreach and imprint into the community. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I, I don't think there's anything we can do at this point. I know it's been offered, and she's accepted the position at that, that rate. However, if we could get her job included in, and I suppose it is included in the salary survey. It might be something where she's going to be frozen.
Right.
And she was aware of that as well.
I think you also need to look at the historic aspect of what's happened. And when Cory left, he did get a, a big raise. But the reason why it was that is that we went from Cory and a seasonal, and not five or six other people helping and being on the backs, that we limited that to just the two-person department, and still got the same amount of work done. So, not saying that's right or wrong, that's just to give you the historic of why that went that way. And it was also that Cory went from, he became an exempt employee, we listed him as exempt, so there was no overtime, and we were expecting quite a bit of extra work done. Right, wrong, or indifferent, again, just to give, to give the picture. As far as I know, yes. I would call people.
That she'll be exempt, or non-exempt?
To be exempt. I mean, that's what the position was. I want to make sure that we're doing everything.
Explain what exempt is, so anybody listening could hear that.
Well, there's, I guess, I, I mean, it's near not HR, but Dave's probably better at this than I am. Bus tracks off.
Exempt from overtime.
Right, there are certain positions-
It's a salaried position.
Are classified as exempt. And there's several different ways you can become exempt by responsibilities, degree, the education, a lot of times, science degrees are, are people are exempt. IT, I believe, is exempt. Also, a big part of IT, people are.
It's an non-overtime position.
So she'd be like a department head?
Right, right.
And would hire and fire her own employees?
Right. For example, Terry and Greg in secondary roads are both exempt employees. And I can guarantee you their hourly wage went down when they took those jobs.
But Paul will determine that for sure, then.
I hope so.
Okay. All right.
After he gets the wage study done.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Good for Jessica.
Next I have is a change of status in secondary roads.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status in secondary roads as a seasonal laborer. The hiring of a seasonal laborer at ten dollars an hour, and it would be Jonah Exleen or Exline?
I'll second that.
Oh, effective May eighth, effective May eighth.
It's been moved.
I second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits.
No, we have another one.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to also approve the hiring of a roadside mower, roadside mower for secondary roads. It's temporary seasonal part-time. Dale Schwark, and the effective date of that is May fifteenth of two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, utility permits, I don't have any. Secondary roads. All right.
I forgot everything I was going to say two hours ago.
Still hauling gravel? Still hauling gravel. Rock, rock.
Any other business? Harry, no other business? I can ask for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.